Okay, yeah, I'm here. Okay, Chairman Ball.
Here, and there is an echo.
We're trying to fix that. Vice Chairman Dibble.
Commissioner Urban.
Commissioners Schrader.
Present.
Commissioners Aruguni.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Who else would you meet up with?
Commissioner York.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Mandel.
Here.
And Commissioner Solas are first.
Present.
Sorry, he's reading a coin.
So the meeting is echoing, and I would like to pause the meeting until that's corrected. It may be corrected now.
Sounds good on my end.
Good. All right, let's get going. So Andrew, I know there's public comment. Is there anything at this portion that you need to make a comment regarding?
Hey, so good afternoon. This is Planning Technician Craig Garrison. I am filling in for Andrew Dimas today. I'm here also with Assistant Director Naina Nixon Mendez. So we will be going through today's planning commission with y'all.
Great, thank you. Any comments now that we need to talk about?
Let's see. So no comments that are not pertaining to any of the cases. All public comment that we did receive will be addressed with any cases that are pulled.
That works. Thank you. Onto item four, approval of minutes. Actually, I'm sorry, on item three, approval of absences. Chairman Ball was absent last time. Do I have a motion for the approval of the absence?
This is Commissioner Miller. I move.
Okay, go ahead.
So I heard a motion from Commissioner Miller. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto item four, approval of minutes. Are there any questions, comments, or do I hear a motion for the approval of minutes?
I have it. I'm sorry, which item we're talking about? Sorry about that.
About the approval of minutes, item four. So I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
This is Commissioner Schrader. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted from the prior meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Miller. I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on. Item five, discussion and possible action regarding the planning commission and airport zoning meeting calendar.
Yes, Chair. This is Naina Nixon Mendez, Assistant Director. We have the calendar presented for your consideration. Essentially, we have two meetings proposed for cancellation, that of November the 24th and of December 22nd for the planning commission. Otherwise, it will go in accordance with its regular schedule. And for the Airport Zoning Commission, we are proposing four meetings, one in January, April, July, and October.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? No questions? Would I, or can I receive a motion for the calendar?
This is Commissioner Miller. I move that we approve the calendar as presented.
Thank you. And a second.
I second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on. Next up are the consent public hearing items. Staff has requested that we pull items 10 and 15 from the consent agenda and move them to item seven, the public hearing items C and D, for further discussion, so to speak. So are there any other items? Go ahead.
Yes, Naina Nixon Mendez, Assistant Director. I do have an update on item, item number 10. And that will no longer need to be removed from the consent agenda. I will be updating it during the reading of the plats.
And that, that's fine. So we will be removing item 15 only. Are there any other items that any other planning commissioner would like to have removed from, from the consent and moved into the regular public hearing?
I do have a question on numbers seven and nine.
Okay, is it best we pull those, or should we have those addressed during the review of the consent? Staff?
If there's to be significant discussion, they should be pulled.
I don't think it's a significant question, just a few clarifications.
Good, we will, we will leave those on the consent.
Commissioner Schrader, I would like to pull item nine, because I have several questions on nine. So if Commissioners Aruguni has questions as well, there may be some discussion there.
Okay. At this point, I have items nine and 15 with significant questions or discussions. Any other ones?
Mr. Chair, I also needed to note that the time extension has been withdrawn. That plat has been recorded. That's item number 11.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Schrader. I have a clarification. Item 15, is that being pulled from the agenda entirely entabled, or is it being pulled from the consent agenda for discussion?
It is moved from the consent to item seven for public hearing, item C and D. So it's just moving further along.
Okay, then I have a question. There was a news item this morning that said that this item was going to be tabled. That was on the, on Channel 6 news this morning.
So that is incorrect. This item 1220-04 is separate from a council case, which was planning commission item 1020-02. The item that went to council yesterday was tabled until the next council date.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And staff, could you please scroll down on the agenda for the people watching at home, so everybody can see what items we're talking about? Thank you. Okay, so at this time, again, we have items nine and 15. Any other items? And item 11 has been removed from the consent. So staff, if you will, please address items three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 12, 13, and 14.
Good evening. I'm reading the new plats for consideration. Number three, Phillips 66 subdivision lot 6A and 6B replat, 1,4934 acres. Number four, Lamar Park subdivision, section four, block 13, lot 19R, final, 2249 acres. Number five, Starlight Estates Unit 6, final, 18.76 acres. Number six, Caio Del Oso subdivision, section four, block 12, block two, block three, lots 12 through 31, final, 10.919 acres. Number seven, Caroline Heights Preliminary, 34.44 acres. Number eight, Byron Willis subdivision, block 2A, lots 01 and 02 replat, 3.77 acres. Number 10, River Ridge Unit 4, preliminary, 38.75 acres, as amended with no condition. And that, all the plans meet the requirements of the Unified Development Code and State Code, and staff recommends approval. That includes item B, excuse me, item A. And so we have the new zoning, which will be presented by Craig.
For item B, we do have case, sorry, agenda item number 12, case number 1220-01, Alta Enterprises Incorporated. To ordinance rezoning property or near, at or near 7,005 Saratoga Boulevard, located along the south side of Saratoga Boulevard, State Highway 357, west of Rockfield Road, and east of Airline Road, from the CG2 General Commercial District and IL Light Industrial District to the ON Office Neighborhood District. Agenda item 13, case number 1220-02. Mario A. Martinez LLC, to ordinance rezoning property at or near 14737, 14733, 14729, and 14725 Running Light Drive, located along the south side of Running Light Drive and west of Aruba Drive, from the RS6 Single Family Residential District to the RMAT Residential Multi-Family Tourist Attraction District, and staff is recommending approval on both of those. Sorry I missed that. Agenda item 14, it's a rezoning of a property at or near 4518 Saratoga Boulevard. It's case number 1220-03, Episcopal Church Corporation in West Texas. So ordinance rezoning property at or near 4518 Saratoga Boulevard. It's located along the north side of Saratoga Boulevard, State Highway 37, the west side of Brisbane Drive, east of Swansea Drive, and south of Clearwater Drive, from the RS6 Single Family Residential District to the Ohan, Ohan Neighborhood Office District, and staff recommends approval. And that is it for the consent agenda items for the new zoning cases.
Thank you. And just as a note, Commissioner York will be abstaining from item 13. I didn't have it read separately, but we will definitely need to vote separately for that, just to note now. With that said, Commissioners, any questions for staff regarding items two, three, five, I'm sorry, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10 as amended, 12, 14, or 13?
I do have a question on numbers, first of all, on seven, please?
Number seven, I haven't told, yes, sir.
I see the proposed new subdivisions with, I believe, half an acre lots off of Staple and County Route 43. My question is that, since obviously our past discussions, we've tried to see if we could have an opportunity for subdivisions to have wastewater. Is the subdivision not close enough or have any wastewater opportunity to have instead of opening these half an acre lots? Is it, is it because they're not able to get wastewater that they are deciding to do waste? I mean, half an acre lot, I guess is my question.
Yes, I'm reviewing it. One minute, please.
Commissioner Ball, this is Dan Dibble. Why Naina is reviewing that. I had called in on my mobile. I don't know if y'all could hear me. I think I was having voice problems, but I am here at the meeting.
Thank you. We are, we can hear you now. While you're reviewing that, it's a, it is a plat. And as long as it meets a technical review committee for item seven and all the other requirements, can we make any provisions to change that?
Yeah, essentially, with respect to wastewater, if it is within, if it is within our master plan, typically, we will require the wastewater. In this particular case, it, you know, the lot acreage does not, or can necessitate septic. And so that is within our code.
This is Commissioner York. I didn't see, they're not requesting a waiver at this time for sanitary sewer service, are they?
No, there's no waiver request with this plat.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Commissioners Aruguni, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. I just wanted to know if they were, if they had asked for a waiver of wastewater at this time.
Right, thank you.
So Chairman Ball, this is Craig Garrison with the city. I do have some public comment that I need to read into record for the three consent agenda items for the zoning, and I do want to know if this is the right time to do that after questions are answered.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Off on the public hearing?
I do.
What I was gonna do was, I was gonna finish our Commissioner questions like typical, and then open it for public hearing and comment, and then close and come back to the question.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for staff regarding those items mentioned?
I have a quick question about item seven. It says that the, the property is not currently zoned and is outside of the city limits. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So they will, they will be requesting after this preliminary review annexation?
If, if stores could be extended, yes, they, they would request annexation, particularly if they are utilizing the trust fund.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do have a question, number 10.
Yes, sir.
Yes, looking at this project, I mean, I, I believe if I'm making a mistake, it's right where all the, in the London area. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Commissioner. Could you repeat that?
I said, the sub, the proposed subdivision is right close by all the developments that are happening in the, like, the London area.
No, this is, this is located in Cal Allen, off of, near 624 across the high school.
Oh, my fault. I, because I saw it very, 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 okay. Thank you for clarification.
Okay, are there any other questions for staff regarding these items? At this time, we will open the public hearing or consider public comments.
Thank you, Chair. We do have public comment for new zoning case 1220-01. This public comment comes from DE Development Corporation. They are in favor of the change of zoning from CG2 and IL to the ON Office Neighborhood District. Their comment is, a change of zoning for the property will stimulate development in the area that remains undeveloped. That's the end for public comment for case 1220-01. We do have public comment for 1220-02. It is one letter of opposition from a Sergio Galvez. He's imposed to the change of zoning from RS6 to single, RS6 Single Family Residential, to the RMAT Residential Multi-Family Tourist Attraction, and he left no comment or rationale. That's the end of comment for item number 13. For item number 14, 1220-03, we do have public comment as well. First letter of opposition is from Mr. De Rosso. He says that it will have increased traffic along Brisbane, off of Saratoga, and is a safety issue for children in the area. A three-story office building is also considered undesirable and will be right in my backyard, limiting my privacy. Next comment is opposition from a Royce Holic, Heather Holic. There is no rationale. And then the last comment for 1220-03, this is from the, this, pardon me, this is from the Holic's. This is actually the rationale here. It says, Dear Planning Commission, my husband Royce and I have lived in country club estates for 29 out of 37 years as Corpus Christi residents. We wanted to write and express our strong opposition to the proposed rezoning case 1220-03 before you on Wednesday, December 2020. At the time of this, of its formation on September 7th, 1967, the deed for country club estates required all lots to be used for single-family residential purposes, with the exception of lot 12 of block 27 and lot 10 of block 49, which are specifically exempted as allowing church and related ecclesiastical purposes. After 30 years, this deed and its restrictions renew every 10 years unless a majority of the owners change the restrictive covenants and file an amendment with the county clerk. To our knowledge and that of city staff, these restrictions have not been changed, and the neighborhood deed is still in effect. We are concerned that the current city process is not respecting the deed or informing all 108 homes to which it applies, as the character of the neighborhood, such as ours, is not measured by a simple 200-foot radius around the subject property. This deed is attached for your reference. The city's approved comprehensive plan in section three states that one of its primary goals is Corpus Christi sustains and maintains established neighborhoods. Our neighborhood has been established for 53 years, and no agreement has ever been reached with the majority, its 108 owners, to change the intended use for this lot. The proposed rezoning is also not in alignment with the South Side Area Development Plan land use map that was approved by our city council as recently as March 17, 2020. Both these misalignments are noted by staff on page one and three of their report, but a simple amendment is not appropriate, as these documents were approved with intent to provide a consistent roadmap for decision-making and planning in our city. Per staff's presentation, ON zoning district would allow townhouse, apartments, offices, overnight accommodation, and accessory uses, such as a restaurant and retail sales. The zoning being submitted is not dependent on an approved development plan, and so your consideration for any rezoning needs to include all possible uses, not just the stated intended use of the owner developer at this time. We recognize that their application references a two-to-three-story office building, but we find any use outside of single-family residential out of keeping with the character and legal deed of the existing neighborhood. This poses real issues concerning privacy and an increase in noise and traffic for the surrounding homes and adjacent city park. In summary, as you make your deliberations, we would ask that you please consider carefully that this rezoning application is not in alignment with our city comprehensive plan, not in alignment with the South Side Area Development Plan, and not in alignment with the deed, and is definitely not in the best wishes of either of us personally or our stoppage of overheads. And that's, that's the end of the comment for item 1220-03.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I will close the public hearing portion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Naina. I did have, in relation to the question on the Carolina Heights, number seven. I, in reviewing the TRC comments, a wastewater waiver is not going to be required, because this area is not within a wastewater master plan.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
And then with the public hearing portion closed, planning commissioners, do we have any other comments or clarification required on items three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 12, 14, or 13?
This is Commissioner Schrader on case 1220-03. Mr. Garrison, the, I believe, the, a public comment there that you just read mentioned that this is not consistent with the, essentially, the HOA deed restriction, and you, did you confirm that that is still in place, that that's still valid, that that is current and has been updated?
I do not have confirmation of the deed restriction on this neighborhood, and see if it was still present or not.
And it's.
And it's my understanding that, that more than 51% of the homeowners had consented and that deed restriction had been amended, so, and has been filed. Not that we enforce deed restrictions, but it's my understanding that, that that's already happened, maybe unbeknownst to the lady who made the comment.
And Commissioner Dibble, that's staff's understanding, as well as that the city of Corpus Christi doesn't enforce deed restrictions.
Correct. That's, that was my, no, I just wanted to understand what the, I misunderstood your, your comment in that statement originally. So I, that, that I do understand, that we don't, that is not in our purview to, to attempt to enforce those in this. My follow-up question to their comments are, the, I believe, the slide, I don't know if you're able to pull that up, but the, she mentioned that this was, in her opinion, was not consistent with, and I'm paraphrasing here, master planning that's in place. I do believe the, in the presentation documents, that that, that is shown as, as actually being a consistent use, generally consistent with what is in this area. Is that correct or not?
So staff articulated that it is partially consistent with a comprehensive plan. The future land use map does have it as medium-density, single-family residential. So the rezoning to office neighborhood would be inconsistent with the future land use map. That said, when you go to our South Side Area Development Plan and also our Plan CC, which is our comprehensive plan, there are several statements. One of them is. there are several statements. One of them is promote a balanced mix of land uses to accommodate continuous growth and promote the proper location of land uses based on compatible locational needs. Second is encourage orderly growth of new residential, commercial, and industrial areas. So staff felt that portions of Plan C support this, but then the future land use map is medium-density, single-family residential.
Okay. And then my final question to you on this particular item is the, of this zone, when I look this one up, the, can you clarify for me the height limitation on ON? It sounded like they were implying that up to three stories are permitted on ON. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the UDC restriction on height for the ON Office Neighborhood District is 45 feet, and the applicant has articulated two to three stories.
Yeah, okay. So that's, no, that's my, that's what I, I thought I saw 30. Okay, and so 45 feet is approved, and then what is the setback? That, in other words, that adds additional points or setback, correct? The further you go closer to that height limit?
Correct. So Commissioner Schrader, there's a few UDC requirements that would come to play if you pushed that upward limit of the 45 feet for the height of this building. One is that it has a hard residential side yard setback of 10 feet adjacent to any residential property. So that would be to the west would be your, there's three homes that border this 1.5 acres that's being rezoned. Next is we do have a commercial setback of two to one. It's a height ratio. So whatever the height of the building is, you have to be double that away from the property line. So both of those would be reviewed during the development review here by the city.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question also on this item, please.
Yes, sir, Chairman.
You mentioned that, if I understood correctly, that ON is inconsistent with the future master plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
So can you explain to me a little bit more about why the staff recommended approval? And also, if there, since, I don't know if the applicant has clearly identified their plans or not, could there be some sort of a special permitting place in terms of the height usage? Because it's a concern for some of the residents, I just want to know what has been the discussion? Being that giving the ON gives the applicant pretty much all kind of opportunity to change their plan and feature, if that makes sense. So just want to get some clarification on that here.
Yeah, so there is no proposed special permit, and staff has not received development plans at this time. By rezoning to the ON Neighborhood Office District, you would just have the restrictions of the UDC that are already in place.
Also, if I may, with the ON District, essentially that limits retail, so you wouldn't see the amount of traffic you would normally see in a commercial district. The ON District is considered a very transitional district adjacent to residential because of that reason.
Okay. Has the applicant indicated what their plan is with the property? I mean, just
The current proposed plan is a two-to-three-story office building primarily used as an attorney's office with secondary suites for rentals to other professionals.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
At this time, are there any other questions or comments for staff?
I have one final clarification on item 7 that Nixon Mendez mentioned about the waiver is not required for the wastewater and that because it is, well, beyond the city limits. If they, if they request connection to wastewater or any utility, then they must comply with all requirements of being within the city limits, correct? That's a choice they have?
Yeah, typically, if I may, typically, those requests are accompanied by requests to use the trust fund for reimbursement reasons. As part of that, there is a requirement petition for annexation because this is not adjacent to the city limits. That's almost a possibility for them.
If I add to enter into a water contract with the city, they have to agree to construct under the city's building permits and rules. That's correct.
Right, okay, that's what I was asking. Yes, and I understand that, but these lots are, except, in other words, they're not likely to do this because of the cost to extend that unless they're able to access trust funds, most likely. But the lots are sized, in other words, they can meet the requirements for septic. Based on a half acre.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Catherine Garza just told me that there's one more public comment for zoning case 1220-03 that needs to be read into the record.
Okay, at this time, I will open back up the public hearing for that comment.
Do apologize. Give us one moment. It's being printed freshly, freshly printed.
Was this submitted recently or was this overlooked?
This is a recent submittal, but it was from, it was from Saturday, so this is overlooked. I do apologize. All right, so this is from Deanna Stevens concerning case number 1220-03. I received the attached public hearing notice regarding the petition by the Episcopal Church of the City of Corpus Christi to consider zoning change from single-family residential to office neighborhood for the property at 4518 Saratoga Boulevard. I live behind the property at 4517 Clearwater Drive, and I oppose the zoning change. Please recommend that city council deny the petition and please do not recommend an intermediate zoning classification or a special permit. Please keep the zoning single-family residential in accordance with the goals and strategies and Plan CC's vision for housing in neighborhoods adopted by the city council. That states that Corpus Christi sustains and maintains established neighborhoods to keep them safe and free from crime. The planning commission can also recommend that the petitioner seek a buyer interested in building single-family residences such as townhomes to encourage residential infill development on vacant lots within or adjacent to existing neighborhoods as stated in Plan CC's goals. Quality of life and safe, quiet residential neighborhoods are a cornerstone to successful communities. These are numerous commercial, retail, office properties currently located across the street along the southwest and southeast corners of Saratoga and Everheart to support business growth. Please consider this matter as if you lived behind the property in question, and again, please recommend to deny the zoning change request. Thank you, Deanna Stevens. And that ends public comment.
Thank you. At this time, I will close public comments. And again, just one more time, entertain any other comments or questions for staff.
I just have one quick question. With this amount of opposition, is that more than 20% that needs supermajority vote, or I just?
I believe that's three. I don't think that's going to be.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Staff, can you clarify?
Yes, one moment, please. There you go. So currently, for public notification, the opposition is at 6.17% with six opposed, and in favor is 13.44% with one in favor.
Okay, at this time, I would like to consider a motion for item 13 with Commissioner York abstaining from this item. At this time, do I have a motion for item 13 or further comment on item 13?
This is Commissioner Schrader. I'll make a motion that we approve item 13 as submitted by staff's recommendation to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I would now like to recommend or look for a motion for items 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10 as amended, and 12. And we will leave item 14 for a separate vote.
Mr. Commissioner Miller, I move that we approve all those numbers you just said as presented.
And a second?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Now for item 14. I would like to have this with a roll call vote, please. Or I need, I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve or deny item 14.
Mr. Commissioner Dibble, I'll make a motion to approve item 14.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Anybody willing to second item 14? Okay, with nobody seconding, I will need another motion or a second.
Mr. Commissioner Miller, I move that we deny requested zoning change for item 14.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny item 14. All in favor via roll.
Aye.
Captain, can you please call roll?
Chairman.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Dibble?
Opposed and out.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioners.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner North?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Menzel?
Aye, aye.
And Commissioner Gonzalez or Garza?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can you approve, Gonzalez?
I mean, one second. Commissioner Gonzalez, are you there?
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Did you, did you give a vote? Aye?
Yeah, I was, I opposed with Dan Dibble.
Okay, motion passes to the night.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, new plot with variance and waiver, we've also added, actually, it's item 7, I apologize, public hearing item C and D, we've also added items 9 and 15. So staff, if you will, and you probably better if we start with item 9.
Yes, Nina Nixon Mendez, I'd be glad to entertain any questions you may have. This is regarding Calico Estates, Unit 5, Phase 2.
Planning commission, any time? Are any questions or comments at this time? Commissioner Schrader, did you have the comments on this one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, was this nine or 15?
Item 9.
Yeah, and I did not have, I did not have questions on nine. Oh, I'm sorry, I had the wrong, I'm looking at the wrong nine. Yes. So my question's related to the, I'm concerned about the, well, I noticed there were some items incomplete on there that are still in question on their response to, and so is this, and I didn't see that this was a conditional approval. Is staff still working out their response to these comments?
Yes, Commissioner, there was a lack of response related to GIS comment number four of the TRC. Essentially, it was just adding the volume and page number on adjacent lots. And then there was a comment related to the detention pond, which essentially, the detention pond is part of Phase 1, which was approved by Planning Commission November the 11th. And so we just wanted, and that was a conditional approval with the note that the maintenance of the detention pond would be addressed prior to the construction of the public improvements. And so that, we're just caring for that comment. At this point in time, the developer is possibly going to apply for developer participation funds. So at this point in time, it hasn't been decided if that will be a private or a public facility. And so we wanted to declare that prior to the construction of the improvements. But those were the only two conditions that would be included with this conditional approval that had not been addressed by the applicant.
Okay, and then the other question I have that is really difficult for me to understand about this development is it appears the entry to this development is a, for lack of a better term, a zigzag. And then there is a, for whatever reason, a two, two streets that form part of a T that don't connect. And it doesn't make sense to me as to why they would not complete that connection. This appears to be, this could be a bottleneck and a emergency vehicle access issue potentially.
Yes, I understand your concern, Commissioner. There are pipelines easements in the area, and so that is the reason for that particular reconfiguration. With respect to sort of the T, it does meet fire code. It does not extend beyond the 150. So, was the cursor? Can I? So you look at, so you have the entrance here, that's what you're referring to, correct, sir? And so
Right there where it meets the street, is there, it looks like there's a zigzag as it comes, right as it comes in. Is the entrance not above your curb, is it straight in, or is it, the entrance looks like it's above your cursor there?
It's a lit up online.
This is Michael York. Maybe this is a dumb question, but the part with the zigzag that Commissioner Schrader's referring to, is that already plotted?
Yes, that was already approved.
Oh, this is already approved. Okay, never mind then.
Yes, we're considering Phase 2 currently.
That's the portion in the back, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason for that configuration was related to pipelines.
Okay, well then I'll
And it does meet fire code.
This regard to question, my questions were on something that's already been approved.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Saying none, I will open the public hearing for item 9 at this time. Staff, are there any comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. Saying none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve item 9 as presented. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Commissioner Miller, I move that we approve item 9 as presented.
Thank you. A second?
Can I share something?
I joined a second.
I think we had three, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes on to item 15.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This is Craig Garrison with City Corpus Christi here to present zoning case 1220-04. Gulf Realty Trust, Poseidon Realty Trust, and Northland Realty Trust are applying for rezoning for RMAT to RV zoning district. This property is located at seven three four nine and seven three two five State Highway three sixty one. And the area is comprised of twenty point nine nine three acres. The purpose of this request is to allow for the development of a high-end RV resort community. This slide shows the aerial views. These are both parcels. In the middle of both parcels, the rezone for the RV district is currently city right-of-way. Here's a current zoning pattern in the area. It does show the annexation date of the RMAT zonings for both of these properties to propose rezoning to RV district. To the north is a RMAT planned unit development. To the south are two RMAT planned unit developments. All three of these developments are townhouse or condominium developments with some being short-term rental or overnight accommodation, while some are being bought and sold fee simple. Across State Highway three sixty one is farm rural. So the UDC requirements for the RV zoning district, we'll start off with buffer yards. The RMAT to the RV requires no buffer yards. The street setbacks should be twenty feet, requires no side or rear setbacks. Development standards within the UDC will be landscaping, screening, and lighting standards. And the uses allowed by the RV zoning district are RV pad rentals rented for one hundred and eighty days continuous, and then permitted accessory uses. Permitted accessory uses can include a beauty parlor, car wash, convenience grocery stores of less than four thousand square feet, daycare centers, dry cleaning, receiving stations, fuel sales, restaurants excluding bars, taverns, and pubs, and self-service laundry stations. These are the requirements of the UDC for the RV district. Max density will be twenty-five units per acre. Minimum open spaces eight percent. And the minimum site area of three acres is met by the twenty point nine nine three acres. And this goes on into the actual stall widths and sizes. Utility in the area just consists of a twelve-inch ACP line for water located on Highway three sixty one. This water line is actually owned by Port Aransas in an agreement between the City of Corpus Christi and Port Aransas. Wastewater will also be supplied by Port Aransas. That was not included on this slide. For public notification, we currently have sixty-seven notices were mailed inside a two-hundred-foot buffer, zero notices were mailed outside the two-hundred-foot buffer. We currently have twenty-five opposed, actually, pardon me one second. Currently have twenty-five opposed at forty-six point fifteen percent. And in favor is at three for one point zero two seven percent. Just for clarification, for notify, for the opposed, twenty-one of those oppositions are one property owner. The other four are four separate property owners. While in favor are three separate property owners. And staff recommends approval of the RV recreational vehicle park district, and we stand by for any questions.
Thank you. At this time, Commissioners, do we have any questions regarding item fifteen or comments?
I do have a question real quick. You mentioned one of the residents sent twenty-one letters. Do they own twenty-one properties, or, I mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that, the owner owns twenty different parcel?
Yes, our notification process is to send to individual Noises County appraisal district parcels. And so this one property owner owns twenty-one different parcels.
Thank you. Does that clarify your question?
Yes, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for staff?
And that, that prop, this Commissioner Miller, that property owner, it would appear from the, from the images in the presentation that, that they have a PUD for a future development, or has there already been construction there on those, the lots that he owns, or that they own?
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Are you referencing the lots to the north? This would be the lots owned by the, the property owner of twenty-one parcels. And yes, it is a planned unit development, and we currently are building permits at that site.
But there's no vertical construction at this time? Everything's just in permitting?
Correct. There's currently no vertical construction. There are two single-family homes located towards the beachside that were not in the notification area.
And I would assume, assume at least one of those is owned by the opposing party.
Correct.
And then the other ones that, the other property owners that were in opposition to the, I guess it would be to the south, that's where the other four exist?
Correct. So this RMAT PUD consists of seventeen point six three seven percent of ownership of the hundred percent. And then the remaining three votes came from this PUD, which was sold fee simple, and their ownership range from point three six five to point zero zero one, depending on how the two-hundred-foot radius intersected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing on item fifteen.
Okay, thank you. I do have some public hearing quite a bit for this case, so bear, bear with me. We also do have a, a call from the primary opposition in the north. And then we do have a call from the applicant as well. And I will start off with a opposition from, from a Mr. John D. Bell. And it says, "Dear members of the planning commission, I represent the Admirals Row Condominiums Council of Co-owners, which represents the owners of the property immediately south of the proposed development. The president of the council of co-owners already has sent notice of opposition to the proposed rezoning utilizing one of the forms distributed. Although the southern neighbors to this track technically are zoned RMAT, the properties actually are developed as single-family residences. This usage applies both to Admiral's Row development as well as Bella Vista development on State Highway three sixty one. The proposed RV district zoning would allow five hundred RV spaces to be developed on the property, twenty-five spaces per acre on twenty acres. Such a development would create tremendously high density in this area that essentially is bordered by single-family subdivisions. Additionally, State Highway three sixty one at this location is limited width and lanes. The existing roadway is inadequate to handle this type of density, particularly with motorhomes and large recreational vehicles. Vehicle stacking on the highway would create, create severe traffic issues. Although the Admirals Row owners are opposed to the rezoning in principle, if the city elects to proceed with rezoning for the proposed project, it should be as a special permit with several critical conditions. The developer has stated that they desire to create a luxury RV resort with about one hundred and fifty RV spaces. And special permit conditions should be imposed to make sure that any development is consistent with other uses in the area and the transportation limitations. Proposed conditions should include: Density, the maximum site density shall be eight recreational vehicles per acre, which would be one hundred and sixty total. Condition two, a buffer yard, a side buffer yard of thirty feet should be maintained on the southern boundary. Condition, condition three, RV site limitations, only one RV should be permitted per RV site. All pads within RV sites must be paved with concrete or concrete tile pavers and be at least fifteen feet in width. All, all RV sites must be at least thirty feet width. All lighting shall be shielded to avoid intrusion to the neighboring properties, and any pole lights shall be at least fifty feet from the property line abutting at a neighboring property. Finally, stacking, a minimum of six off-street vehicle stacking spaces shall be provided between the public right-of-way and any front gate or intersection in order to allow stacking of approximately two or three RVs to avoid congestion on SH thirty-six. Representatives of Admiral Row hope to participate in the WebEx meeting, but if there are technical difficulties, I'm here for any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. And so that is common from the development in the south, as represented by John Bell. Next comment comes from a petition that was given to the City of Corpus Christi. This petition, petition has eight hundred, sorry, one hundred and eighty-one signatures that were outside the notification area. Staff has not vetted the, the citizens' names at all, but the statement is, petition against rezoning case number ten twenty dash oh two, and this case twelve twenty dash oh four. Do not allow, do not allow additional RV parks along the Highway three sixty one corridor from Corpus Christi to Port Aransas. The State Highway three sixty one corridor from Corpus Christi to Port Aransas has long been known for its condos and beach home subdivisions. The condos, commercial condo complexes, and single-family home subdivisions along the corridor are the land's highest and best use. The present use of these properties reflects that value. It has long been known that this was the reason for the annexation of this area by the City of Corpus Christi. Changing the use to RV lot will reduce the value of the property being rezoned, the value of the surrounding property, and the yearly tax base as well. This will be a step backward for the City of Corpus Christi. The median price of homes in Port Aransas area has increased seven point two percent over a twelve-month period to four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Sales have increased by sixty-six point seven percent in the last twelve months. And months of inventory have dropped from eight point one percent to four point six percent in the last twelve months. The median price of homes in the Padre Island area has increased ten point nine percent over a twelve-month period, just three hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Sales have increased by fifty-two point two percent in the last twelve months. And months of inventory has dropped from six point three percent to three point zero percent in the last twelve months. Ranging the zoning change to the proposed property to allow for an RV park will negate all the progress which has been made in recent years as well as future values for the next few years. Quick hurricane evacuation would be impossible. And that's the end of the petition that was signed by one hundred and eighty-one signatures. Okay, for rezoning case number twelve twenty, Mr. Yates says that this property is directly behind our house, which means it controls the view we have from our two back decks. We've reviewed the plan project and are satisfied it will be a good addition to the area. So this is a recommended approval. A letter in opposition from Admiral's Row Council, which was represented by John Bell, also is opposition here. So Turnkey Construction Group is in opposition because of safety from hurricanes, does not match the area, and significant change from original zoning. Clint Tucker and Danielle Tucker are in opposition because of decreasing property values. LaConcha Master Association Incorporated is in opposition. From Ron Hollenbeck, "Dear Mr. Garrison, my name is Ron Hollenbeck, and I own a home adjacent to the proposed development that is the subject of this rezoning request. My wife Kelly Lamson and I are both in favor of the proposed development. We feel that the development will add exceptional value to the local economy by bringing in high net worth guests who will undoubtedly want to stay for long periods of time. We feel the central part of the island has been underdeveloped, and this will likely attract other quality developers and amenities in the area." Okay, last public comment will be from a Carl Battalich, and he has requested that we call him. Please give staff one moment. Mr. Battalich, this is Craig Garrison with the City. Hi, Mr. Battalich, this is Craig Garrison with the City of Corpus Christi. I have you on speakerphone in front of the planning commission for your public comment against case number twelve twenty dash oh four.
I'm in trouble with the news today. Is that right?
Hi, Carl, we are currently voting on item twelve twenty, or sorry, case number twelve twenty oh four has not been tabled.
Oh, it has not been tabled. Okay, so when do you want me to talk?
Now. Currently, sir.
What?
You are currently addressing the planning commission.
Okay. Come on. Okay, I was told that it was held, come on.
Yes, sir, and you do have three minutes to speak, and we're about thirty seconds into this.
Okay. Well, got a comment here downstairs. That's what the staff go about a memory, that's not good. You said on your, one of your reports that it will not affect the addition properties. And it does. And you said it will not affect other developments near the well, and it will. And will lower the damage of the property. I have a hundred and eighty-six seventy-two calling that, in fact, that is a problem. And I thought, I told it, someone told it to take. The, it said it didn't have a sore line. There was no sewer to the property. There is, because I put it in. And Gulf Trust didn't work on them paying part of that, and that's helped enhance the property. The property itself is better than it was ever before because there was, there was a slow time. And people like Phil McComb, Mike Fussie, and Lloyd Neal corrected the problem with the zoo committee, because the zoo committee kept the property from development. They, they felt that it was bad to develop the island. And after that, the property on the same island became more marketable than ever before. The twenty-three lots that I'm doing will have a tax value of one hundred and fifty thousand, while the twelve acre tract would have a tax value of sixteen thousand. Let's take that and times it by ten. So the tax value of the property, if there are housing over there, would probably be around nine hundred thousand. The, with housing, and with trailer park, the tax value would be maybe thirty-two thousand. And I'm not opposed to people making money, and I'm not really against it, but I'm against what they're doing, because it totally, you have on here that only twenty-three, twenty-one people were against the development. That's not so. I have twenty-three lots, townhouse lots, I have one homestead lot, and my partner bought a lot, and my neighbor has a lot. That's twenty-six. And I know that Schroder emailed in today fourteen of them, so we got forty against sixty-seven. And there was one fellow I talked to. And there was one fellow I talked to right there at Bell Vista that did not get a notice and he's highly against it. You're taking two subdivisions and putting a trailer park in between all of their facilities like nothing has ever been there before. And, you know, the condo development, you're gonna lose the construction, real estate, lumber, engineering, city permits and insurance and name issue. And development, we're not getting the hotel motel tax. And, you know, we have enough RV parks. The one development that was first mentioned about putting a strip mall in the middle, it's an RV park too. So that, that went out and we talked about that yesterday at city council.
Carl, sorry to interrupt you, you've passed the four-minute mark here, so we're gonna end your public comment and thank you so much.
Thank you, bye.
Okay, thank you, that ends the public comment for case twelve twenty dash oh four.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing and commissioners, do we have any questions or comments following?
Chair Ba, I do apologize, we do have the applicant here on WebEx with us, I completely forgot, I apologize.
No problem, I should have asked, I actually was going to, at this time I will open public hearing.
And the applicant has provided a brief PowerPoint. Give me one second to make sure that he's not muted.
Can you hear me? This is Michael Condon.
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, and how much time am I allotted?
Three minutes.
Okay, great, well, good evening, everyone, appreciate your time listening to our case here. What I'd like to do is present to you the image that many of these opponents have not actually seen or unwilling to see. This is a slide deck of the proposed resort we're showing and I'd like to show you that this is certainly not going to be a trailer park as people typically hear it. So as we go through these slides, we'll, we'll see renderings and I'll give you a better view of what this project is. Next slide, please. It will be a gated beachfront luxury RV resort, twenty-two acres that are manicured, tropically landscaped, one hundred and forty-four large RV sites with outdoor living spaces, fifteen beachfront homes, which I'll address, that is not in the current rezoning, that is the existing RMAT. Will have several amenities, catering to luxury motor coaches. It's gonna be peaceful, safe and secure community and it's being signed by an award-winning RV resort designer with twenty-five years and six hundred and fifty projects worth of experience. This is the existing property that we're rezoning, requesting a rezoning, next slide. These are actual renderings that our architect is creating specifically for this project. This is not a trailer park, many of these lots are, we're averaging over three thousand square feet per lot, actually over thirty-two hundred. Next slide, please. We'll keep going through some of these renderings, next slide, just to give you some visuals, next slide. Next slide. This is the proposed layout, which we can review in further detail, I guess, outside of this meeting. Next slide, please. To clarify, the RV rezoning is not all the way to the beach, to the beach construction line. The existing RMAT stands intact and well, that's where the beachfront homes will be. Next slide. This is the view of the resort taken from a virtual camera on the Bella Vista decks, trying to illustrate how this is not a parking lot, this is not a jammed-in community. Next slide, please. Amenities, we'll flip through some of these, this is the current rendering of our beachfront community center. Next slide, like to skip these as we get down to the economic impact, please continue, next slide, next slide. Little splash pad, next slide. Next slide, putting green, continue, Alabash, next slide, next slide. Let's skip through this for time here, next slide, next slide, economic impact. We definitely want to refute the assumptions that we're only gonna bring in twelve to sixteen thousand dollars. This shows our property taxes proposed with all the improvements, our beachfront homes. Some beachfront homes will generate hotel occupancy tax and with our, our market, we also expect to bring in sales tax and, and also actually over nine million dollar, about nine million dollars for estimating in just gross tourism dollars based on eighty percent occupancy. Next slide, we're near the end here. Development taxes would begin immediately versus the current developments in the area which are still only twenty-one to twenty-seven percent sold after twelve years. Next slide. So in summary, we expect to win national awards and attract tourism dollars, be tropically landscaped and manicured throughout, provide tranquility and comfort to the modern RVer and be a great neighbors and celebrate Mustang Island community. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your time. Any other comments from the public?
No other public comment.
Great, at this time I will close the public hearing and again entertain comments, questions or emotions.
Please Commissioner Miller. I have a question for the applicant, have you developed similar resorts anywhere else in the United States?
We have not, but we have been, we've been frequenting several times a year Mustang Island. We've been having RVers for the last twelve years on the island and we're very familiar with the community, that's kind of our home away from home.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Schrader, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. One of your slides, you mentioned that it wasn't, wasn't clear to me what you were speaking to, but you mentioned that there are some units that will be developed as RMAT that are, that are facing the Gulf, is that correct?
Yes, it is currently zoned as RMAT, it will remain that way.
Okay, and so the, the shaded portion, or well, okay, on this slide that you have here, you're, you're developing, you're proposing as part of this project to develop a row of site-built homes, vacation homes facing the Gulf, correct?
Correct.
And that is, that is included within this development or is it, is it a future development?
That is a, a, a part of the current development that is to be done. We, on our current schedule, we hope to break ground as early as next summer. We are, we are pushing, we're moving as quickly as we can, we just, we want to get this thing going and not sit around. So those, yeah, the whole resort entirely will start, start development as soon as we're.
And then I noticed here that you also have this, the city right-of-way is showing a pond or I presume maybe more like a wetland maybe through it. Is, is this development contingent upon getting, gaining the control of that right-of-way or how, how does that interplay into your development plan?
It is not contingent upon it and we have been in discussions with the planning department, the planning and ESI department as for what our options are with this land, a pond, we believe we were permitted to create a little connector road. As you can see, a little connector road down the middle to, to get from one side of our resort to the other. If it ends up that we're not permitted to do that, we would just refactor this to have, you know, a welcome center on each half of the resort. But we, we do have active discussions with the city, with the planning, ESI department about this strip of land.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or staff?
I do have a clarification on some of the oppositions. I believe there were two which were not read, two in favor, Janet Key and Mike and Kim Thetford.
And, and I apologize, but at this time I have closed public hearings, it would only be for questions to the applicant, is that correct, staff? Or do I need to open back up?
That's correct.
Sorry, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Or motions?
This is Commissioner Schrader, I have a couple of comments. The, the presentation is certainly very nice, a lot of work has gone into that, I really appreciate. I just want to clarify our for his, his understanding, our purview does not really allow us to consider too much the planned development because what we are, what is before us is a change in zoning that and we have to consider this property as, if we didn't really know what the actual development may, the quality that it may or may be, may not be because what you have designed has not, is, is not committed to, so to speak, as it's not tied to the change in zoning in and of itself. So we have to consider this from the standpoint of what the, this zoning change, change in zoning would permit.
Understood.
So, so we, that is, that is gonna be factored into our deliberation in that.
Well put, and, and they're also, we are a recommending body to city council and then with the opposed, the amount that are opposed to this would require a, is that a three-fifth, three-fourth vote, I believe it is.
That is correct, yes.
So again, that's a good, good point, Commissioner Schrader. Any other comments? Okay, at this time I will entertain a motion for item fifteen. For approval or denial, or to table, there are several options we have. This is Chairman Ba, at this time I will make a motion to approve item fifteen as presented. Do I have a second?
Please Commissioner Miller, a second.
At this time, we will call roll for item fifteen.
Okay, Chairman Ba.
Hi.
I'm Chairman Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner Schrader.
Hi.
Commissioners Aruni.
Hi.
Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner York.
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Magal.
Hi.
And Commissioner Solas Garza.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you for your time, sir. Okay, moving on to item sixteen.
Ninety-sixmentis Assistant Director, item number sixteen and item number seventeen are heard together. Item number sixteen is flat block gardens, block four, block fifteen are replanned, one three acres. And item number seventeen is a weight, the same fact. We do have a presentation. The urban engineering on behalf of Joshua Elton Gonzalez, property owner, submitted a request for a replant requirement to construct streets according to the local street standards in UDC section eight point two point one B, including water, wastewater, stormwater and sidewalks. The infrastructure description and sizes can be seen on attachment of your agenda materials. The city is requesting a twenty-eight foot street section with a four-foot sidewalk, high-grade infrastructure. Plant will provide an additional five-foot dedication to meet the standard fifty-foot right-of-way width for Doug Lane. Currently Doug Lane does not exist and it's considered a paper street. The original logistical background, the original plan was approved by Oasis County Commissioners reported in nineteen forty-seven and that plant provided street dedication for the layout of, of the subdivision. But many streets were ultimately not completed and constructed by the developer. The city of Corpus Christi annexed the area in nineteen sixty-nine. And so this, if we could go back to the other slide right there. So you can see the location of the property in relation to the Don Patricio Road. And if you look to the north along Doug Street, just on the Grand Street, you can see that there is a section of road that doesn't exist. And the lower half was never constructed. Next slide. The subject property is located west of Waldron Road, north of Don Patricio and the land is settled RS six, single-family district. The site is currently vacant, the owners are proposing to develop a single-family home on a point fifty-three acre plaza that are solidating three lots into one lot. This slide shows a closer view of Doug Lane and currently it's a forty-foot right-of-way near Don Patricio Road. Now, the next two slides will show the existing condition. You can see the Don Patricio roadway section here in relation to the subject property and an arrow pointing to the right-of-way, next slide. And again, here is the roadway from a different perspective. Okay, so with respect to the waiver, the applicant's factors in support of the street waiver. The proposed street is considered a paper street since the plan of the subdivision that indicates Doug Lane was filed and recorded on July sixteenth, nineteen forty-seven. Only one adjacent property owner would benefit from the street. There are no existing sidewalks anywhere in the vicinity of the subject property. The area is not located along an existing or planned CC RTA service route. The comprehensive plan will not be substantially effective. Not providing the street will not be detrimental, would not be detrimental to the public health, safety and general welfare within or adjacent to the subdivision. The property is not along a road in the mobility plan or the ADA master plan. And so factors weighing in support of the waiver and in support of, excuse me, factors weighing against the waiver and in support of the required street. The property is in an RS six, single-family district and is a corner lot for which a street sidewalk network can be continued for future development of single-family homes down Doug Lane. The crossroad is Don Patricio Road, which is designated a collector's street on the urban transportation plan and Doug Lane is constructed with tie-to-collector roads, the other being Grand Road to the north where the northern portion of Doug Lane is developed. A one thousand three hundred linear foot section of Doug Lane was constructed south of Grand Road. This construction would start the road development from the south and could encourage and fuel development of the subdivision. The approval of the requested waiver will put an extra burden on the additional lots which must have access to Doug Lane and they will end up constructing more of Doug Lane than their fair share. There is a surfaceable wastewater manhole with six point seven five foot depth at the street corner that could be utilized to extend a new wastewater manhole, the property's north front inch along Doug Lane. And also to avoid unfeasible construction, has a polluted water line, one hundred-foot water line extension with our hygiene could be considered to meet water infrastructure requirement for Doug Lane. And the developer cannot not replant and build on one of the planted lots if they do not want to install the required infrastructure along Doug. Next, okay, this slide shows the UDC requirements related to the required infrastructure. In your packet, the applicant provided a cost estimate. Uh, in your packet, uh, the applicant provided a cost estimate uh, related to the road section. Uh, the cost, uh, to construct a twenty-eight foot back-to-back is a hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred eight dollars. Again, this is along the frontage, which is around a hundred seventy feet. Dove Lane. Uh, and then they also showed a half-street construction cost of fifty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars. Next. And again, these are the provisions related to the required, uh, waiver. Next. Staff recommends denial of the waiver. And planning commission may choose to follow staff recommendation or can decline staff's recommendation. They could also approve the conditions. And I stand by for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff regarding items sixteen and seventeen?
This is Commissioner Miller. Um, we recently heard a case, uh, on Dove Lane, did we not?
Yes, sir. There was a case, I think it was, uh, maybe about eight months ago. And it was on Don Patricio, uh, and the planning commission, uh, recommended denial or acted and, um, excuse me, say approved of the waiver. The planning commission approved the waiver for that particular case.
And so that was directly across Don, Dove Lane from this, uh, particular development?
Yes, uh, it was located a little bit further down Don Patricio Road.
Okay. Sorry, it looked familiar, so I wanted to make sure that, that I remember.
I believe it was on the southern side of Don Patricio Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments?
This is Commissioner Schrader. Um, the, does the, is there anything that prohibits the applicant from, uh, requesting a curb cut onto Don Patricio? Is there anything that prevents them having access a driveway to Don Patricio?
It caused the street, it, for example, if there's a waiver of the street construction, they, they would have to, they would, we would have to provide that street cut. So if the waiver was granted, we would have to provide that street cut, allow that street cut.
Okay. Uh, as I noticed, for instance, across this, across the way, that property has a, a, a curb, it looks like it's a curb cut into it from, from Don Patricio, um, but not off of the, um, the intersecting street. Um, and that is, wha- what is the process that determines which, which street they may have access from?
Typically, for these residential street cuts, it's the main street that the street cut is permitted. That the driveway would be permitted on.
It's the main.
If you're at a corner and if you have a collector or a local, it would be permitted on the local.
Okay.
This particular case, if the waiver were granted, we would have to allow the street cut on Don Patricio.
Okay. And then my, uh, the last question is the, if property owner, if there, uh, properties that are to the north of this, this lot, uh, that own those lots that have been, already been, I presume they've already been platted is the reason for Dove Lane's or paper street even existing. Um, if an owner of that property wants to develop and we, uh, we allow the applicant the waiver, um, they're on the hook to getting their own access, essentially constructing how much ever Dove Lane is necessary to get access to their lot. Right? You know, there's nothing that triggers requirement that the city has to build that street to get them access to their property?
Uh, you're correct in that they would have to provide the access.
Okay.
As part of the development.
So we're, part of this, this is sort of a unique, uh, situation in that part of our determination burdens, uh, potentially burdens other property owners more than what they might otherwise anticipate. That was a comment I, I, it's kind of. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding sixteen and seventeen?
Uh, yes. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening. My name is Josh Gonzalez. I'm the property owner for lots.
Sorry, give me one second. Sorry, I have not opened public hearing just yet.
Oh, oh, sorry.
One second, I'm about to get there.
Yes, sir.
Hey, this is Commissioner York. I, I do have a couple of questions. Um, Nino, on, it, you mentioned that they could build on the lots, you know, without plating, separately build on the lots. If, if they did that and did not replat, would they be able to still get a driveway cut for that, the lot that is adjacent to Don Patricio? I mean, if they had just gone today to, to request that without a plat or, or the waiver or anything?
Yes, yes, they should be able to get a driveway cut because Dove Lane is not constructed.
It doesn't exist.
And, and the, the, i- it's not fully constructed, so they wouldn't be able to get that.
Okay. And then second question, just kind of to clarify on what Commissioner Schrader was asking, because I think this is going to come up in the future for places and on Padre Island as well as it starts to develop more. If, if one of the lots in the middle of, of Dove Lane develops, you were saying they would be required to build not only the street in front of their lot, but all the way out to Don Patricio or, or whatever connecting street. Are there any city participation or, or funding opportunities to help with that, or are they just on their own?
Uh, Michael York, this is Al Raymond Development Services. The city does not participate in local residential streets, right? The participation bucket is for greater than res, local residential streets, so that answer would be no. And the city looks at it as it's a developer, so even if it's, it's a single homeowner per se, the developers are required to connect, uh, to the, to the system. Connect local, local residential streets to the system.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Commissioner Miller, I also need a clarification. Um, sorry. So, just so I'm understanding correctly, the, um, the applicant is responsible for half of the street, correct?
Uh, we are, we are requesting the, the full cross-section.
Correct, but, uh, based on the, the engineer's estimate, the applicant would be responsible for fifty percent of that, is that correct?
We're requesting the, the full cross-section.
So, so the answer to your question, Michael, we can make the motion either way, I believe, and Buck might have to correct me on that one, but I think we can make the motion that, hey, we need to approve this and we approve for half the street for his costs and, and so on, but I think that's how we can make the motion for it, but the recommendation for all of it. If we approve for half, does that mean we're approving a half-street construction? I wouldn't agree.
Okay, uh, staff is requesting the full, the full section. Uh, the planning commission does have the ability to approve a half-street construction if they so desire.
Correct. Thank you.
And that, um, or I can put it on my screen. Um, I'm looking at, oh, sorry. If you want to go back to the slide, um, with the, uh, that shows the, the requested plat. Now, the property owners, the property, right there, uh, the property owners to the east on the, or I'm sorry, to the west on the other side of Dove Lane, uh, are those still individual lots, or have they been, uh, platted into a larger piece of property?
On this plaque, they're shown as individual lots. Um, 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 this plaque reflects the surrounding lots, so.
It just, it seems a little difficult for me to wrap my head around why, uh, one property owner on one side of Dom, Dove Lane should be responsible for the entire street section as opposed to, um, any responsibilities for that property owner. As they will, they will benefit from that street section being provided by his neighbor across the street.
I agree with that, Commissioner York, just, and just a question, if the, if this goes through and they construct the full street, does the, if, if and when the property owner on the opposite side of Dove Lane replats those lots, will they have to pay for their portion of that street?
No, because that would all already be constructed, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, are there any other comments or clarifications? Let me put that out there as well. If somebody liked a clarification of what we're approving or denying, we'd be happy to answer absolutely anything we need to. Saying none, at this time I will open public comments, please.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we, we, we receive no other comments. We have received a lot of comments on this other side of the owners testifying unless urban engineering is on.
One second, one second. To clarify, city, will you please clarify who we're going to be speaking to?
This is Ninety-six amendments.
So we're going to be hearing urban engineering or the applicant?
That is correct. That's my question.
Am I on camera? Is?
Yes.
Is urban engineering on?
Yes.
Did you have any comments related to this?
Yes, we did, and I believe the applicant wants to speak first.
Yes. Please do. Okay. Good evening. My name is Josh Gonzalez, twenty-eight years old, uh, born and raised Flower Bluff, Texas. And, uh, I'm the property owner of lots fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Uh, this property, the address on it is seven fourteen Don Patricio. And, uh, when I bought this property, this half acre, my intent was to, uh, replat it, replat the free lot into one single lot. And, uh, build a, build a eighteen-hundred square foot house on it. I didn't know I would have to be paying, uh, waiver fees for, or I didn't know I would have to pay fees for, uh, Dove Lane. Because it was just a paper street at the time, or it still is, it's all it has been. And, uh, none of my utilities are coming from Dove Lane. All my utilities come from Don Patricio. I have access to my property from Don Patricio, which is, I have a driveway right there. I got seven fourteen, my address is seven fourteen Don Patricio. Let's see. And build on one lot. So, and also, after listening to what y'all said, I, I can't build on one, one single lot because it's not deep enough. I'd have to replat it at least two of the lots to get a house on there. What else? Let's see.
There's no sidewalks.
Okay. And then on the opposite side of Dove Lane, there, there, it'd be on the north side on Graham Road. There's no existing sidewalks right now, so I don't understand why I would have to pay for sidewalks to be put in there.
There's already a cutout driveway to Don.
Uh, so. Uh, I'm asking for these, these, uh, construction fees to be waived because it would make my construction prohibitive, cost prohibitive. Uh, I'll let Urban speak.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, this is Mark Hudson with Urban Engineering, representing the applicant. My comments are that the property was originally platted in nineteen forty-seven. Properties were bought and owned as platted lots at that time. Properties were in the county. And the presentation that Nina made, I believe it was nineteen sixteen, something, when the property was annexed by the City of Corpus Christi. These properties were platted lots at that time on a paper street, have existed that way since the very beginning. At that time, the city effectively encumbered properties and burdened them by virtue of ordinance. Up street is probably their lot. None of the property owners had a choice matter. They shouldn't be burdened with that now as a requirement of the city. All of these properties having to participate or build the full section makes them essentially undevelopable. City needs to take responsibility for the continuation. Needs to be able to participate in the street development if that's what they desire, if they want these properties to develop. I'd also like to point out that the city staff has recommended a pile of a property just less than a half mile from this property on Don Patricio and the corner of a paper street. And the planning commission ruled that the niles and approved waivers, requirements to build the street. Also to point out that there's another property on this paper street, Dove Lane, the north of this property that was platted and was not required to participate in street development. That was in two thousand nine. And then I would just want to reinforce the property owner's position. It's an undue burden to have to participate in street cost and to develop this lot. And also, if the waiver is not going to be granted, I'd also suggest that we table the plat that we could revisit the cost participation issue. Property owners do not and, and cannot accept responsibility for the full lift of the construction. The property owner, if the waiver is denied, would probably request to put out money and move up construction. And we would approach the city with that at that time, but right now, our assumption is the waiver would be granted.
Thank you for that comment.
Anything else, any applicants or urban?
Um, can you hear me?
I can.
So I'm Ashley Renee Gonzalez, and I was wondering if, if for public comment, I can speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, so we, I wanted to clarify some of the things that were, were talked about in, in your meeting is I've lived in Flower Bluff for forty years and so I'm very familiar with that neighborhood. And so I think it's important to note that that corner property there, so the very first lot is actually seven fourteen Don Patricio, and it fronts Don Patricio, and it actually has a cutout to Don Patricio already existing. So there is a, a concrete slab on the property that appears that there used to be a structure there. So Josh wanted to build a house there facing Don Patricio, and the two lots on Dove would essentially be the backyard. The reason that we have to do the replat is because the lots are only fifty foot wide. And with the first lot facing Don Patricio, you have an easement, right? So, so the lot essentially is less than fifty feet wide. So unless he built a very slim ranch-style home, he wouldn't be able to build a house that, that completely resided on that first lot. So in order to back the house up a little bit and provide for the city easement along Don Patricio, he has to overlap that next lot. So our initial thought was if we could just replat two lots, so the one lot on Dove and the one lot on Don Patricio to be combined. And we were told that if you're going to do a replat, you might as well replat it all as one lot. The thing of it is, is that's consistent with what the neighbor to the west of Dove Lane did, which is currently Fiesta Gardens, which is a, a wedding venue. And you'll notice that their property takes up half of Dove Lane, and they were never required to put a road in on Dove because they also. Because they also access the utilities that faced on Patricio, the same as what Josh is proposing to do. So the reason we're asking for the waiver is because there has never been a road planned to be there. Since nineteen forty seven, when the original developer did that flat. And other other properties in the area have been able to to build based on the truth. And so I just wanted to be able to clarify some of what maybe is being presented. You know, to make you understand that that the property actually has an address of seven fourteen Don Patricio with an existing driveway already in place.
Correct, and to clarify, the replat triggers all of these other items. And that's a one, one lot, two lots, or three lots, that's what's triggering this, and it's it's just part of the protocol. So the waiver, you've approached it correctly, the waiver comes in, and then we make a recommendation to approve or deny. So you guys have got the process coming clear, so. Thank you for the comments as well. At this time, are there any other public comments from somebody that we have not heard from? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Planning commissioners, if we have any other comments to ask or questions. The applicant's representative from Urban also has requested a approval of the waiver or a table. So please keep that in mind for your motion.
This is Commissioner Schrader. I have a question for legal staff. If we approve this waiver, at least the way I'm, effectively what we're doing is is forcing whoever owns the rest of these pro, if these are, say, these properties are actually single ownership individual lot properties. Are we effectively making any kind of opening the city up to any kind of legal claim by those that that their properties have been made effectively undevelopable due to being cost prohibitive in any way?
No, I wouldn't say that the the downstream owners would have any cause of action against the city if we waived that. If the commission waived it.
Okay, because effectively what we're doing here, I mean, if if we were to approve this waiver, what we would end up doing was we would make the rest of that property really only developable by somebody who is capable of develop, making a a small development out of it, building the street section. You know, which obviously the original developer should would have needed to do to to avoid this kind of issue. So if that's what this effectively becomes if we were to approve this. And we have, we have no way of knowing or or and aren't responsible for knowing how many different owners are back there, but that's, that's what this kind of unique, unique issues do.
Any comments from staff on that or any other comments around planning commissioners?
I, this is Commissioner Miller, and I appreciate Commissioner Schrader's comments. And and it's kind of a catch twenty-two because not only, not only are we, if we do approve this, are we burdening the other property owners with, you know, future access for their properties? But we're also burdening the applicant for something that really should not be one hundred percent his responsibility. And in addition to that, my thoughts are, you know, this, all these lots have been on this paper street since nineteen forty six. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
And, you know, this body has also approved a waiver eight months ago on Dove Lane as well, and it's kind of one of those things where if it hasn't been developed in the past sixty, eighty, almost eighty years, you know, and and we have approved a waiver eight months ago for a similar property. What's good for the goose should be good for the gander, and we're talking about a hundred and sixty foot right away. If if in fact, all those properties are owned by a single owner or, you know, are going to be developed by a single developer at some point. I don't see a huge impact of a hundred and sixty foot of of a street section being installed to access that development at that time. But those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments from planning commission?
Yeah, this is Commissioner York. My only comment is that I I understand. You know, having developers construct streets, but the the heartburn I've got is considering this as a developer, you know, it's just a single, it's a homeowner. And they may technically meet the definition, but this, my personal opinion, I don't see this as a developer, so I have a hard time. You know, committing them to build this street, especially when they have an address that runs on Don Patricio and they don't technically need it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? At this time, I will entertain a motion for approval of the waiver or for tabling the item for further discussion between the applicant and Development Services, and a date needed to be assigned to that.
Ms. Commissioner Miller, I move that we approve the waiver as presented, or as the applicant has requested.
Commissioner York, I'll second that.
And this is for item sixteen and seventeen, so the approval or the denial of the waiver approved the plat. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye. Me and me. Let me pick up the show off.
No opposition? Motion passes. Moving on. Item eighteen.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioner, we've got a good wall as policy of the interior development services. Now we're going to be discussing the item six for public hearing and consideration or recommendation, I'm sorry, for the twenty twenty four proposal proposed amendment. Star Code Act will open on January the first, twenty twenty, and close the first, twenty twenty. And during that time, we receive sixty proposed amendments. We created a group, Development Services Technical Advisory Group, that discussed the submitted proposed amendments from March to September time period. We discussed fifty three amendments in total, and forty two of those amendments require a WDC Texas amendment, and five proposed, we all agree, that not require an actual amendment. We are sending thirteen of these amendments to be sent in twenty twenty one, if I could go over a little further in the presentation. So some of the amendments are, the first round of amendments that include editing and clarifying. There were twelve amendments that were categorized as effective. Editing and clarifying amendments remove conflicting language between the UDC and the code of enforcement, statute, or federal law. So state, federal law, and the UDC, some of those are erratically incompatible use of conflicting farmer's market, outdoor displays, and animal pens. We're also changing language to ensure state law and standards are meant for changing mentally retarded to intellectually, intellectual disability to be consistent with Rosa's law. We're removing quasi judicial and legislative decisions that are already dictated by state law for planning commission, landmark commission, and zoning board of adjustments. We're removing specific reference to local, state, and federal code citations for final plat review criteria. We're changing the director of planning to director of development services, and amending the science table to align with the adult and billboard sets. We'll also be moving forward with minor amendments, and four of them are categorized as minor. Minor, minor amendments are changes that change the intent of the code without a change in actual policy. And these would be allowing for appeals to be considered by the Assistant City Manager of Development Services prior to city council consideration for proportionality of municipal infrastructure costs. Incentive by the development of distressed historic buildings, adaptive reuse, encouraging the development of diverse community downtown for both residential and commercial and defined rehabilitation historic. And for certificate of appropriateness, we would establish a time group that begins upon a certificate of appropriateness application being decomplete. We're also combining the uses communities, combining community service and places of worship uses to be consistent with the religious land use and the institutionalized personality. And that was an app that was done in two thousand. We're consolidating mixed use options into a single mixed use and revising and adding clarifying, revising and clarifying definitions. Now, policy change, we have twenty six amendments that we consider policy change. And those are amendments that change the intent of the code or require an actual change in policy. So the amendment summaries for these include administrative exemptions for sidewalks in an already developed residential area that does not have existing sidewalks. Promoting public safety by revising current language to be consistent with the International Residential Code to disallow ease and easement. Requiring proper driveway spacing, visibility triangle, and limiting mid-block obstructions. Requiring canopy trees with a minimum caliber of two point five inches every thirty linear feet of frontage on an on an arterial or collector straight right of way or off-street service party. Of areas constructed and located behind the principal building which are screened from the view of the arterial or collector right of way. We'll also be looking at the trust funds and developer guarantees, and we would be providing additional necessary language for the wastewater and water, water and wastewater trust funds to be consistent with the Texas Local Government Code. We're removing the stormwater trust fund, and we're simplifying the calculations in the wastewater and water trust funds to make it easier for the developer and for staff when calculating those fees. We also will be looking at accessory lots, and for this, we'd be reducing side yard setbacks for nonhabitable accessories. And that's going to be five feet for detached, nonhabitable structures without residential use in an RE only. We're increasing the allowable detached accessory dwelling units in the following. So for SR, RE, and RS twenty two, we're going to one thousand maximum total square footage. For an RS ten, RS ten, and RS fifteen, it's eight hundred maximum total square footage. RS six, and RS four point five is five hundred maximum. We're reducing lot sizes and setbacks, so minimum lot width in your RE is going to go from one fifty to one hundred. And an RS twenty two is from one hundred seventy five, and RS ten is from eighty to fifty. And side yard setbacks in the RE from twenty five to fifteen single and for fifty to thirty total. Additional amendments include facilitating development and redevelopment. For this, we would be providing an exemption for existing nonconforming lots to remain nonconforming after a natural disaster or when utilizing local, state, federal funding or the reconstruction or rehabilitation. We're removing zero lot line development from the UDC. Providing density bonus in mixed use districts for low impact development and improved parking. By doing this, we're reducing parking requirements for utilizing low impact development features. Allowing for reduction of parking by utilizing cross-axis agreements or easements in short-term bike parking spaces such as bike racks or long-term bike parking spaces such as bike storage lockers. We're encouraging alternatives to demolition for historic properties by extending the maximum allowed days for the stay of demolition for one hundred and twenty to three hundred and sixty five days. Dragway approaches from sixty days to three hundred and sixty five days. And for removal or amendment of historic designation, a stay on commercial parking use or a driveway approach may be considered for a period of up to three hundred and sixty five days after recommendation of the Landmark Commission and City Council finding action to remove this source plate. As discussed in the beginning of the presentation, there are some considerations that will be had in twenty twenty one. And so we will work internally and externally with multiple stakeholders to begin discussions for some of the following. Parking community enrichment fees, traffic signal placement to promote public safety. Reconstructing districts to allow for more effective management of land uses. Landkeeping to improve air and water quality. We're looking at streets to promote public safety and connectivity. Wastewater exemptions to require more properties within the city limits to connect to wastewater instead of utilizing septic systems. And we'll be also looking at signs to amend or amending the whole sign ordinance to to ensure compliance with recent rulings. So quick outreach, we met, stated previously, we had a Development Services Technical Advisory Group. And that was created to assist city staff in putting all proposed amendments to ensure that language brought forward for consideration is well-rounded and incorporated and addressed concerns from a diverse group of stakeholders. The group makeup was two planning commissioners, one residential builder, one commercial builder, one insurance agent, a realtor, a member for our property owners association or homeowners association, one engineer and one architect. We had some additional stakeholder outreach that included posting the proposed amendments on and summary table for public comment on the city website the first week of November. And then we also met with the Coastal Bend Home Builders Association, we sent, I'm sorry, we sent that same spreadsheet to the Coastal Bend Home Builders Association associated general contractor contractors and the previously established UDC stakeholder group. We also met with the Coastal Bend Home Builders Association as they requested, and we met with them this Friday, December the fourth and discussed these amendments as a whole, and we received a go-ahead to move forward with all of these amendments. So what is our next steps? City Council Public Hearing and First Reading is scheduled for January twelfth, twenty twenty one, and Second Reading would be scheduled for January the nineteenth, twenty twenty one. If approved, the amendments will take effect upon publication. This is typically the Monday after city council approvals, that would be January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. And I stand by for any questions.
Good job on your report. Very fast, very thorough. Any questions for this report?
This is Commissioner York. Yvette, thank you for all your hard work, and yes, thank you for for going through that quickly. Good job. Only question I had was the the agenda or the agenda packet, was that the final version of all the changes that you sent?
Yes, we, yes, we removed optional optional developer guarantee until further discussion can be had.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other comments?
Yvette, this is Commissioner Schrader. The, in the amendments section, the the zero lot line residential development, I I I probably missed this in here, but I wasn't able to find essentially what replaced all of that lengthy language. Was that substantially simplified somewhere, or what is the general? How how is that type of development handled now? Is that in a HUD or what?
Sure, I can answer that. So zero lot line development is one that we discourage in our community, but would still allow by HUD. So they can still use these techniques with the HUD, but it's a a development type that has only been used one time since it's been established, and it's not something that is commonly used in our area. So what we did is all of this language is pretty much mirrored throughout the UDC and various sections. So if somebody wanted to come in with a development type of this sort, they would have to go through the HUD process.
Okay, so essentially this eliminates somebody applying this, attempting to apply this by individual line item to a single lot. They would, they would need to develop a HUD as the as the means for doing something more compact.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? This is on the public hearing agenda portion, so I will open it up for public comment at this time. Staff, are there any comments regarding item D? Number eighteen.
Nine amendments, we did not receive any written comment regarding this.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion required by the planning commission for approval? Or is this just for our information?
A motion is required.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve item eighteen as presented.
This is Commissioner York. I move we approve item eighteen as presented.
Commissioner Miller, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Good job, good report. Moving on to item eight.
Yes, nine amendments. This is a briefing and discussion regarding process changes for the planning commission twenty twenty annual report. You received the agenda items related to this particular item. Essentially, city council adopted some changes in boards of commissions procedures in March, on March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Currently, the annual report has been done administratively with these new changes now. It does require some participation and review by each of the commissions. And so each year, what we will be doing moving forward, we'll be presenting the annual report to the planning commission. moving forward, we'll be presenting, uh, the annual report to the planning commission for ratification. Uh, before this file with the city secretary's office. Uh, there are some basic requirements of the report that include a, a statement of goals and objectives for the previous year, description of actions taken to further these goals, the number of times the board met or failed to meet, and the goals and objectives uh, for the new calendar year. Of course, uh, we did attach our previous report and we provide a very detailed accounting of, uh, the, uh, uh, of the, uh, actions of the planning commission and the considerations of the planning commission. Uh, but at this time, we would certainly like to engage the planning commission to see if they are interested in adding uh, any additional information, uh, to the report. Uh, they can, you know, you can certainly inform us tonight or you could email, uh, requested information to us. We will be compiling the report and, uh, providing it for the planning commission's review in January.
Uh, any comments or would anybody prefer to email any additional comments for that? Nope, good. Uh, I did not see anything I had at the moment, so thank you.
Thank you.
And this is not a public hearing item, is it? I don't believe it's under.
No, sir.
Thank you. Um, great, moving on. Anything else regarding the planning commission twenty twenty annual report? If not, the, um, moving on to director's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Anything else to be scheduled for, uh, the planning commission? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night.